Going to Modesto Christian, which is a private school. But it was just, it was too expensive.
I'd like to declare this meeting of the City Council of the City of Escalon open. This meeting is September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, and would you please join me in the salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hagan?
Here.
Councilmember Bellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Crummick?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Swift?
Here.
And Mayor Als.
Mayor Als would be absent, excused.
Absent, excused. Okay, very good. Okay, we'll start out tonight's meeting with two presentations, and at this time I'll turn it over to Chief of Police Flores.
Thank you, City Councilman Robert Swift. I got two presentations tonight. City Council, City Manager, members of the community, friends and family. First presentation, it gives me great pleasure to introduce the newest full-time officer for the Escalon Police Department, Officer James Murray. As many officers have come to like him, he got the nickname Dad, so they call him Dad. Officer Murray comes to us from the Stockton Police Department and the California Highway Patrol. He worked briefly in Stockton PD, but soon realized that that was not his fit. Although a mechanic by trade, he found his call calling for the Escalon Police Department. Officer Murray started in December second of two thousand and twenty-one as a reserve officer, and then September first of two thousand and twenty-two, he was converted to full-time officer. Officer Murray is a local resident and has embraced the small-town community and atmosphere with the application of community-oriented policing, which he loves, and he likes to be part of it. So present here with him is going to be his fiancee, Michelle, and his four children, Samantha, Spencer, Shelby, and Madison. Right? You got everybody? Okay. And the penning is going to be done by his fiancee, so you know, you stand up. You say something if you want.
Officer Maria, would you like to say anything?
Yes, I would.
Because I do have questions, but I'll let you speak first. Five minutes is the standard, right?
I would just like to say I'm truly humbled and honored for this opportunity. I have all my family, and my parents, who have been a great support to me, whole endeavor. Escalon is a great place to work, and there's another family that I have. All I can come back to say is that I'm just truly humbled.
Thank you very much. I do have a question, and I see some of the other officers in here, so if you don't want to answer, that's okay. Dad, why Dad? Yes, yes. I mean, I know he's your dad, but to the officers, why, there's a reason for Dad, and I have a feeling it's a good reason. Yes. And no comment in that case. Congratulations, you'll be an asset to the force and be great to have you aboard. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Officer Flor- Chief Flores?
Okay, my second presentation tonight, it's going to be what we call the MAD Award, Leathers Against Drunk Driving Award. This is mainly, let me give you a little background statistics here. About 1.5 million drivers get arrested in the USA a year, roughly. Last year, about 150,000 people got arrested in California, just in California, for misdemeanor DUI. Roughly about 4,900 were felony DUIs. And roughly about 11,600 people died due to DUI crashes. So Officer Gek, Nicholas Gek, who's present, he's taken that type of investigations too hard. He's learned. He hasn't gone to DUI school yet, but he's doing stuff that he's already, after he got into school, he would be doing better. Last year, we had thirty-one DUIs for the whole department. Officer Gek had the most, eleven. And because of that, I contacted the Association of MAD, Leathers Against Drunk Drivers, and they sent me a what we call a PIN, the twenty-three, one, three, two, which is the vehicle code, for a person who gets arrested for DUI. So here's a letter from MAD to give you a challenge coin, and here's your PIN. I appreciate that. And that's it.
Well, frankly, Officer Gek, again, congratulations. It's a very important thing. Unfortunately, I was hanging back from Chico, and there was a fatal accident we had to go through, of which, it's my understanding now that drugs and alcohol were involved. And so every time you catch something like that, you have no idea the importance and the impact that you're doing in saving people's lives, so congratulations. At this time, we're going to continue on with the meeting with the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. For example, item number two, I will be abstaining from voting on check numbers nine, eight, seven, eight, and seven, seven, six, seven, seven.
Moved to approve the consent calendar.
Yes, yes. Now is the time.
Which item is it?
Yeah, which item, Gary? It is consent calendar.
Okay, on the minutes. I made some comments about councilman education at the last meeting, and they were not mentioned in the minutes at all.
I'll make sure they get in first. When Dominique's in, Council will be asking you for an approval on the minutes, and of course, that would also, at this point, mean that item number one will be amended.
As amended to include that language, would you like us to bring it back to the next meeting for approval as amended?
Yes, so it can be read before you're proven, if you would, please.
Council, do you feel comfortable with pulling that one from this meeting, and then we'll bring item number one back as amended for the next meeting?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Mr. Crummick?
Sure. Thank you.
No, thank you. So therefore, I do have a motion, I assume the motion still stands to vote on the balance of the consent calendar, which would be item two and three.
We've got someone with a hand up there.
Thank you. Congratulations again, gentlemen.
So this is Sean Strowman, Yosemite Avenue. Real quick, before they head out, we just heard about Dad, the newly pinned police officer, and all the hard work that Officer Nicholas Gek is doing for MAD. Regarding agenda item number three, I think it's appropriate to say, as a friendly reminder, get our police officers raised they so desperately deserve.
Thank you very much. Okay, it's been moved to approve agenda consent calendar item number two and three, and I do need a second.
A second?
It has been moved in second to approve agenda items number two and three. All those who favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes four to zero. And of course, again, we will revisit item one at the next meeting. Staff communications, Dominique?
Yes, I'd like to have a go, and I'll go last because I'm always the longest, so.
Just wanted to keep you updated. We're working closely with animal control. We have a survey out now to establish the services that we're providing and see where people are at with our services. On our next presentation, next meeting, we'll have more of a detail of what we're working with and how we can make that better for the citizens of Escalon.
If you need any input on that, just let me know, I can help you out.
Yes, definitely. I'll discuss it with you whenever.
Sounds good.
I'm okay, thank you.
I have a few. The first item is, you probably received a, should have received a flyer, I'm trying to think of the word, a flyer for a downtown improvement project workshop. This is specifically related to the Main Street Bike and Pedestrian Plan, as well as the First Street Improvement Plans. If you may recall, the First Street Improvement Plans, we received or were awarded $500,000 through the Measure K grant for a project at First Street. We've kind of set it aside in the past because there were issues with the public concerning parking and landscaping and those type of things. But we have since dusted it off and are trying to move that forward and included it in our workshop with the Main Street Pedestrian Plan. This plan was monies that the city was awarded for active transportation monies, ATP funds, approximately $1.9 million. And so we'll be conducting two workshops, both dated for September fourteenth. An easier to get information from the public regarding the workshop and introduce the project, explain the project, what the project's goals are. The project itself, as additionally, as proposed at this time, has intersection upgrades, bike and walking path improvements, as well as a restroom to be located down in Main Street, new concrete sidewalks on the park side to help with pedestrian bike paths for bicycles. And so we wanted to review everything with that with the public, and so those will be two workshops being held. We do have flyers up front. We posted it on our Facebook. And so the first one is at ten AM that morning, and then we're also offering one in the evening at five-thirty. And then we'll move forward from there, and we will have our engineer present at those meetings as well to help assist with staff on any technical questions that come up that maybe we're not able to provide an answer to at that time. So that's our first step moving forward with both projects. Because they're both located downtown, we wanted to put them together and move them together as a downtown upgrade, since they'll both be feeding into our downtown. LTF update, I'd sent an email to the council advising the city's recent approval through the Stanislaus Council of Governments to use our LTP funds for streets and roads. As some people may be aware, these funds are typically used for transit systems only, which would include our bus system that we have. However, the city received COVID relief, federal and state grants, and with all the grants that we've received the past few years, we had a surplus of funding that was going to be basically set aside and held in a bank account until we were able to use it. And so we went to SJ cog and asked permission to be able to use that fund for other needs that the city has, which includes roads and streets. And so we did receive that approval on August twenty-fifth. It's three years of funding, which totals to about $235,000 that we will now be able to use for something other than transit. And this is the first time that a city in this county's been approved for something like this. It's not typical. Pandemic basically played an active role in opening this up to us, but I wanted to let everybody know, because that is a big victory for us, being a small town, that other cities supported us in that fight. We went to several boards, several meetings, and for the most part, the smaller agencies and city agencies understood that we're small and have other needs and didn't see that our transit, it should be helped for just our transit system, given the resources we have. And so we've got a lot of support there.
Yeah, please. And will this be able to be used for the sidewalks as well?
Sidewalks would be included as well. Yeah, we did confirm that a few months ago. And so $235,000 sounds like a lot. It could get used up in one project very quickly, but at least we're able to utilize it now instead of banking it and holding it.
Well, I'd make the argument, yeah. I'd make the argument that that's $235,000 that we didn't have before. Really wish we had, we desperately need it, and now we have. And so again, thank you, and Councilmember Bellinger, and everybody else who was involved in this effort. I understand it was a Herculean effort.
It took some cheerleading at the executive committee as well as the regular board meeting.
That's good.
We got a lot of support. It was really great.
Good work. Very good, very good.
Larger agencies that have obviously more need and more use for larger populations and stuff, they didn't agree with it, and they made sure that it was on the record that they didn't agree with us being able to use the funds this way. However, the way that the process and procedure is set up through SJ cog, it wouldn't have been given to another agency, and it would have just sat in our.
We're setting escrow basically in SJ cog's account until we grew our transit needs to use it, yeah.
Yeah, major win, guys.
It's good that we were able to use it.
With the opposition of the big groups, we still managed in the, at both meetings to get universal approval. There was no votes. We had all yes votes from all the voting members, so.
Big win. That's a big win.
We'll take that as a definite win for our city, most definitely.
Next item, municipal services review. As I indicated at the last meeting, that went before the planning commission, and is scheduled to go before the council next meeting on the nineteenth. The public hearing has been published and added to our Facebook page. We've also set up a specific page on our website for public notices. And so if you go to the city's webpage, www.cityofescalon.org, on the front page, we've created a page for public notices, and that's what it's entitled. And so you just click on there, and from now on, we'll be listing every public notice that goes out. We always encourage people, if they have questions, to call in and ask. They're required to be written a certain way. We also have to keep them to the point to an extent, because the more we put into them, the more we have to pay in the advertising, and it gets very, very expensive the longer we make them. But we have staff available to answer any questions by email, phone, Facebook, et cetera. Update on wastewater treatment plant modernization. Been a while since we've talked about this one. We have been meeting with our consultant, Blackwater, and we are anticipating to have, the design's in process, thirty percent drawings completed by the end of the month. And so we'll be moving forward with that. At some point after that, we're going to need to move forward with scheduling to meet with industries. And so we will let you know as we move forward with that. I will be moving forward with that, but that's where we're at right now, thirty percent drawings. And as you recall, these design drawings are covered by our ARPA funding. That's where it's being paid for. And I believe that's all I have at this time.
Is there any, if I may ask, has there been any new movement in the last three weeks? Was South Sound Keen, where we left off, the engineer thought that we could actually go ahead and go with, I think it was IT's worth the plan B, but the plan that the council had approved several months ago? Has there been any update?
Not specifically. In general, our staff, city engineer, has moved forward with beginning the topographical mapping survey and an alignment study. And so they've told SSJD that we have a loop on all of those findings and things. So we are moving forward with moving those things forward. And SSJD is still working on providing us some updated numbers in regards to costs. And so we're there, but we are moving forward with the mapping, surveying, and alignment study.
And you'll bring those costs back to us when you have them?
Yes.
For discussion, yea, nay, that kind of stuff?
Correct.
Okay. Just wondering how many steps we have between now and that first shovel hitting that ground?
I mean, it's a work in progress. We have it listed as ongoing with construction in accordance to everything not planned until 2025, so.
Will there ultimately be an RFP? I assume we're going to have a company.
Yeah, it's going to turn into a construction project that will need to be bid out. We're going to need to do environmental. We're going to need to coordinate a lot of stuff with the county, because we'll be running a pipeline through their public right-of-way. And so it'll be a lot of coordination with other agencies besides SSJD to move the project forward.
I think the big win was to have, as long as South Sound Keen and we are on the same page.
Yeah, that meeting that we had was, was a big ticket to get all of us in there. They'll probably take us there, and so everybody's on the same page now.
Big win. That's fantastic. Are there any questions from the council we're getting regarding staff communications?
I have a question for Justin. I noticed the sign on one-twenty that they're going to start doing some work here. Can you expand on what they're going to do? Starting the eleventh, I think it was.
What they're going to be doing right now is coming through and basically doing all the USAN and all the mapping in order to start doing the asphalt work. The construction, as far as the concrete on AD ramps, is being pushed back a little bit. Why, I'm not quite sure, but it's still in the process, but they're going to get through, going through, marking everything up, and to just start removing asphalt and laying down. We still don't have a definitive date, but they have enough to start getting engineering down on the ground, so everybody knows where to go and what to do.
They're actively moving that project for us. Okay. I was hoping that was what you were going to tell us.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions before I ask the audience? Do they have any questions? No, no further questions?
Good question.
Audience, what you got? Under staff communications?
No, under open meetings. I mean, under.
Staff communications. Why, I wanted to see if the audience had any questions, specific questions about staff communications.
Understood. There's actually no place for that. I know it's been a tradition here to do that, but it should actually all come under public comment if it's not under an.
Well, let's just swerve into public comment, because I'll be asking those. Well, actually, let's just do this. Let's swerve into matters presented from the audience. And the public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the authority of the city council. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes, and unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. So let's dive into it. Audience, are there any?
Heard Dan's three-nine-zero-eight. I had a question on the MSR. And after reading it, I didn't really get a feel for any kind of circulation designation for the property that the Murphy brothers want to develop, which I would imagine would be the first one to be developed. I don't see where that won't impact Brennan and maybe come out on California, where there's already a stub to that property. And so I'm going to be very leery about any approvals of that without some kind of traffic diversion light at Brennan to be included with that development and how the city plans to manage that flow-through traffic. Seventy-two homes, you know, times four, people there, two cars, 150 cars. That's going to impact that whole area there, especially trying to get out on, Brennan's hard now. So just a quick comment, so when it comes up, part of the approval from planning and council, that that's included, and hopefully the Murphy brothers can get together with the county and get that light approved for their, help the city out.
Very good point, Kirk. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience before I open it up to the phones?
Gary Haskin, last council meeting, I made some comments about the need for council to have basic education, specifically in the Brown Act and other items that tell you what you can do, how you should do it, and specifically what you can't do under the Brown Act. What I would like is that discussion be put on the agenda. If I could get council consensus to put that on the next meeting's agenda, I would appreciate it.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much. We revisit that during council communications.
Right, and we'll just inform our esteemed member of the audience, there is a form to fill out, to request it, and then it'll be processed, it'll be forwarded to the council members. And that just needs to be filled out and dropped off at the front desk. Understood. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that process there.
Anybody else from the audience? Anybody else from the audience? Yes.
Evening again, Council. Sean Strowman, Yosemite Avenue. I know you can't publicly comment back, but I did have a question for Mr. Collins. The paving that you referred to is that the well-anticipated resurfacing of one-twenty through town to create, or to correct the slurry seal mistakes that you mentioned in the May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting?
That is correct. It's a little bit more than overlay. They're actually taking quite a bit out to put back.
So they're correcting their mistake?
They are, yes.
It's about time. And I actually was going to ask about that, so thanks for beating me to the punch.
All right.
The other item that I just, I'm making a request to council for consideration, and now that Chief Flores is on board, I'm making the request to him as well. So I came before the council about six years ago, asking for consideration of a speed bump on Yosemite Avenue due to the sheer number of families that travel up and down in Yosemite. So prior to the installation of the speed bump from Justin to Campbell, it was Escalon Zone drag strip, especially after school hours. Councilman Hagan can definitely attest to that. And luckily, we had two neighbors who parked on either side. They were in the parking lane, not in the bike lane. But it's, I thought it did a great job. But one of our neighbors, who used to drive a nineteen-eighty-six Ford Ranger, I guess the Ranger went bye-bye, because it's no longer parked there. And during school hours and after-school hours, and now twenty-four-seven, people are ignoring the bike lane, ignoring the parking lane, and driving over the speed, driving around the speed bump. It's so bad that about a week ago, I witnessed somebody heading eastbound, saw the speed bump. That neighbor on the eastbound, on the south side, saw the speed bump, or had a car parked there. The individual was towing a fifth wheel and went, was heading eastbound, saw that they had to go over the speed bump, so they went across both lanes of traffic to the north side of the speed bump to go around with the fifth wheel, because they didn't want to drive over the speed bump. So we can't stop all the idiots, but I understand, after speaking with Mr. Collins, that there are specific rules what we can and cannot have in the bike lane. But I would request that the city consider at least putting up some plastic delineators, designating the bike lane, and keep these folks honest for driving around the speed bump, because if people are going to continue to drive around it, there's no real need for a speed bump, and we might as well just take it out. So just make that request to Chief Flores and Superintendent Collins. We just need to do something, because it's getting bad again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to make a comment, question? Anybody on the phones would like to make a comment, question under matters presented from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to administrative matters. Item number four, this is a discussion of an agenda and requests submitted by Councilmember Crummick and Councilmember Hagan, requesting discussion on the Recreation Department and Recreation Facilities. Can I assume Dominique, go to you, or who should I go with on this?
All I did was throw something together. Unfortunately, Councilmember Crummick had to leave the meeting for something personal, so he will not be returning unless otherwise noted.
Okay.
So at this point in time, if Councilmember Hagan wants to move forward and discuss his item, we'll probably need to move this to the next meeting to discuss Councilmember Crummick.
Yeah, I think he's okay with me talking about it, because I just spoke with him, but I can't speak for him directly, I guess, but he seemed fine with it. So basically, what I'm working on currently is, based on the surveys that were done. um, based on the surveys that were done, looking at softball and baseball and soccer, and kind of basically seeing, you know, what was highest priority to lowest priority, and, uh, realizing, you know, that baseball and softball are, uh, you know, what the community is most focused on as far as priorities are concerned in the rec department. Uh, I created a, a game plan, taking a lot of different people's ideas, not just my own, but, uh, a lot of different people in town, and, uh, spoke to a lot of different experts in the field uh, to create a, kind of a game plan that allows for our recreation to kind of seamlessly move into, um, into the high school from point A to point, uh, Z, so to speak, uh, in a way that would be financially sound, but also, um, allow for our kids to compete, uh, and not be left behind as far as competitiveness is concerned, at the same time fostering, uh, uh, family, community, and, and, um, uh, you know, um, the fun aspect of things as well. And so I'm supposed to speak with the rec department tomorrow to kind of go over that, that aspect of it. Um, this aspect of it is kind of, I think, synergistic with that, synergistic with that. Uh, so what that is, is, is pretty much, um, an idea that, um, um, Councilman Crummish brought to me as, 'cause he knew I was working on this stuff. Yeah, I'm, basically, uh, with, um, Drucey on the corner there. Um, Drucey is concerned about getting a little bit more cushion with the city, uh, and needing a parking lot for his, um, for his, um, workers. And so the idea was to basically see how it would work with the, the current map that we have, and seeing how it would, you know, how much land could you potentially sell to him in exchange for him building a parking lot that we can both use. Uh, so the idea would be, he would build the parking lot, we would be able to use that parking lot as well. Uh, he would also get a little bit of buffer land he's looking for, and we would be able to then get funds from that transaction, that sale, to then, uh, upgrade our current fields, uh, and create basically, um, uh, the kind of, um, community center that, you know, would be upgraded to allow all these kind of things to happen. Um, so that's kind of the general idea behind it, and so part of it would be revisiting the, the current, um, plan that's there to see if we did this, how much land could we actually, um, potentially pinch off and still have a really, uh, you know, complete type of rec facility? Um, so that's basically what we're looking at. So I wanted to try, try to get your input on it and see what you, you thought.
Uh, few questions. What, um, I know we can't designate who we're gonna sell the property to with the surplus land act. I know there's a lot of fund restrictions there that obviously they can express on that. But outside of that, what is the current value of, I don't know how many acres he's, was it how many acres is he thinking he wants for a parking lot?
He, he had expressed the idea of nine point two.
No, is my opinion.
And I think a lot of it has to do with what can we actually do? So I think before we'd even be able to answer that question, we'd have to know what, um, you know, what can we do with what we currently have if we, say hypothetically, took that land, uh, which would be, you know, I think mutually beneficial, uh, in a, in, because you're gonna have a parking lot that's built that we're able to use on top of the funds to.
But you would sell him the nine acres and he would make some of that grass for us to use, is what you're saying? Or is that?
Well, the parking lot for sure. I don't know about the rest of it.
So why would we sell him excess? We don't need nine acres of parking. Why would we sell him nine?
Looking at the transaction, being able to fund the upgrade of the facility.
How much do we think we're gonna get out of that land at, at an acre pricing of that property?
Well.
Are we thinking, and how much would we get out of that?
Good question. Somewhere probably around forty thousand an acre, if I would think would be reasonable. Um, but, uh, again, it would have to, uh, kind of, it would have to be based upon what, uh, the map actually is telling us is possible. So in other words, when you look at what was currently put out there already, if you hypothetically did this, because right now on the current community center grounds, there's a lot of dead spaces that could be reallocated. There's, um, um, the, the actual facility itself, so you're talking about basically potentially just fields that go out, so you're not talking about a lot of, um, you know, infrastructure, essentially.
I just, I did, I would like to know more about the cost associated with how much per acre of, whether it be grass along with backstops and all that kind of stuff, before I would really consider it a thought. But I think honestly, nine acres is way too much considering we wanna give out property on that same lot for senior housing potentially, and all of a sudden, we only have three acres of grass.
We'll look at.
Because we sell nine and then we wanna give up three to five, that's, you know, thirteen acres, we have five acres left. And then that restricts us for not just the near future, we might be good, but I'm looking at a couple, three decades down the line. Once we move that needle and we get rid of all of that property for these other things, to fund the immediacy of just the small section of turf, the city grows slowly, but it grows, and it needs another ballpark, and we don't own that property anymore, and we can't expand. It's not in our control at that point. I'd be concerned with selling nine acres of property. If, the parking lot is an interesting idea if they're willing to in perpetuity let us have access to it when we need it.
Yeah.
There's gonna be conflicts with his business, though, because of when he's in hauling season, he's working more than, you know, nine to five, and they're out there playing sports at the same time. But if you can move the parking lot from where it was in the original plan to there, if it's just a parking lot, and that's not gonna be more than a couple of acres, that would be something I would, I would be willing to get more information on. But the idea of parsing out nine acres, that's half of our property out there.
Well, that's why I wanna look at how realistic it is.
What's he gonna do with the other? And again, with the surplus land act, state's gonna come after us and want us to put probably low-income housing, I would imagine, there first before we get our shovel, doing what we want with it.
That's why we put that section of the surplus land act. Um, we just went through that with that little piece of property that the city gave us.
Right.
Uh, permission to, to go through that process to sell, and that was only forty-five hundred square feet. So we put it through that sixty-day process, and obviously because it's so small, nobody was interested. Uh, but there is potential there that you go through that surplus land act. Um, they provided a list, and they, they essentially have a statewide list of affordable housing developers, and they advertise the land to them, and if they're interested in the land, they get the first dibs on the land and.
Before we can even sell it to one of our members?
Yeah, we can sell it to them. Um, and so three acres, ten acres, those are large pieces that would obviously, I would think would be more interesting to them than, than a smaller piece, so.
I'm not interested in giving them that option.
We would run into if we move forward with it.
That's a high risk.
Well, I was looking at that.
That's way too high.
Potential reason I say that is because, uh, the seniors are, have already expressed the wanting to go fair market attainable. So it kind of changes the, the dynamic over there. Um, and so my, my request is not that we do this immediately. My request is that we would be able to, um, look at the plan closer and see how realistic it could be. So like, in other words, could this happen, but it's maybe five acres? Or could this happen, uh, at nine, two? You don't know. Like unless you look at it and say, okay, this is how many fields we can put in this, you know, this particular, um, number of acres, so to speak. Um, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
It'd be interesting to find out if there have been communities in California that have done something like this under the, uh, surplus lan, land act, you know, because it sounds like basically if we were to say, yeah, let's go ahead and consider selling this, that triggers that, the provisions of that surplus land act, correct?
Well, the discussions of it certainly puts people on notice that eventually we'll get back to HUD. So as you start discussing, hey, let's get rid of this piece, maybe pretend, get rid of selling a piece of land for rec purposes, um, that will eventually start getting back to HUD and the state that says, wait a minute, you are supposed to, as a reminder, that every city is supposed to have a list of surplus land every year. It's supposed to be updated, and it's not on there, and they might start saying, why isn't on there if you're discussing selling it, if you're discussing selling it? In which case, then we start, might start getting blowback from the state as to this is supposed to be designated and start that process, which.
And we're back down to their, our own village thing and back into the old volcano.
Well, it, it, it's, right, it just goes back to, the state has declared what the priority must be for surplus land of even municipalities, and the first dibs goes to, you know, that list that we have, including, I on the list is affordable housing.
I've got another idea, just to throw it out there, Councilman Hagan. Not that it transfers property, but I don't know if it's possible, but obviously they're gonna, they want a parking lot for space and distance between there. If the plan for the rec area is reimagined, shall we say, and you decide you wanna put a parking lot there, we don't sell the land, he becomes a benevolent donor of the city. He puts in the parking lot, and he's got access to it, but it still retains our access. It buys him that distance he wants, but he doesn't get any ownership of the land.
Yeah.
And he can pave it. It doesn't give us the money to expand the park at that point. That is the downside to that thought. But I think if we're gonna, you know, with the MSR and possibly some development, there's some more money there. We're never gonna grow as fast as we want with a lot of the stuff that we want, but that would give us a parking lot without paying for it. He would get the distance he wants to move away from the ball fields a little bit more.
Hmm.
We're in agreement for parking between the two. I don't know if that's an interesting thing or not, but he was gonna pay for the parking anyways, but he doesn't buy the land, but he gets usage in the distance, and then we get a parking lot. I don't know. Lots of ideas out there, and the Rec Commission's probably got a whole bunch as well.
Yeah.
Um. I, I think, I think at this point where we're at, and I'd like to get some audience input on this too in a minute. I think where we're, we're at is we have this council, as per request by Ann Shaddix, has shelved, temporarily shelved the notion of donating or using some of that land for senior housing, this coun, this council, this council, which means you're only about four months away from possibly revisiting that. And so until that idea is, is buried by a future council, it's my understanding that that's still Plan A out there as to what to do with that land, which, knowing that it would probably not be able to get off the ground for two, three years, you go back to, uh, Mayor Al's option regarding alfalfa out there, putting, getting something, you mean going with alfalfa out there, get a little bit of money into that rec fund in the meantime. So, uh, to me, relatively speaking, that's the most palatable option. Again, we would have to change or literally reverse the notion of the possibly using that land for senior housing. Once that's done, now that now everything else is on the table and a possibility, but it's my understanding that, that really we're still on that track.
Yeah.
Um, audience, any input, please? Oh, sorry.
Hey, Dominique, are we still on that track? 'Cause I was, uh, I was under the impression that we weren't getting that feedback still, or are we still getting that feedback?
For the senior housing?
Yeah.
We're still in, in discussions with.
Okay.
With groups. Um, we actually had somebody submit a proposal today, but I haven't had a chance to look at it, and so I didn't want to put that out there, 'cause I haven't even, I haven't, like, it, it came in and I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. And that was through CCH, um, which is a group similar to RHF.
Okay.
Um, and so they, they have submitted something, um, they're also one of the companies I've discussed about community involvement and attending a meeting and, and reviewing their project and, and basically coming to the council first with, with their idea and presenting it. Um, and so they know that that is a requirement, and we had updated that into the RFP.
Okay, so there is another potential viable option then?
Um, there is, if, if the council is interested with that, yeah.
Gotcha. Audience, I think there was a hand up.
Sean Strowman, um, let's back up to the very beginning of what Councilman Hagan was saying. Um, Councilman Hagan, with all due respect, you know, I think very highly of you, but when you started your comments, uh, it really, the hair on the back of my neck went up. And it's not your fault, but as council, are you aware that the recreation survey that Councilman Hagan mentioned has not been released to the citizens and the constituents of Escalon? We don't have any of that information. And so the priorities that you mentioned, baseball, softball, our constituents on the phone are like, what are you talking about? We, I mean, the results of that survey have never been publicly released. And so I may, I'm making a request to council, please share that information to us. Second point is, um, the current master plan that was done in 2015 for improvements to Hogan Park, um, nothing has been done out there since 2015, since the master plan, except for the new Justin Collins restroom. It's, uh, it's beautiful, by the way. But, uh, I think before this council, uh, looks at making improvements to Hogan Park, let's take a step back and look at the 2015 master plan and consider making those improvements in phases to Hogan Park. Because I think that you can do that and make it a phased project and still get the goal that, what you wanna try to achieve. But as a taxpayer and as a constituent, it shows that you're actually doing something that my tax dollars went towards in 2015 to bring to the future of Escalon, rather than starting over. And the master plan isn't just this beautiful map that sits in City Hall that people look at every couple of months. So, just, just two suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other input from the audience?
Gary Haskin, what really scares me about the proposal is the surplus land act. I read through part of that, and that's gonna be a big, basically bugaboo, because you will get low-income housing, because they will outbid Drucey or anybody else. I think we need to take, you know, if, if the discussion continues, as the city attorney said, it's gonna red, raise a red flag to the state, and they'll be down here talking to us. That's the last thing. I have one other thing in mind. Uh, would, would your information, Councilman Hagan, should that go through staff rather than, than a councilman, because there's supposed to be a separation between commissions and councilmen, which is part of the education you would get if, if everybody went to the classes they were supposed to? Uh, I don't know if that's a strict, hard-fast rule, or whether it's just policy. And that'd be state policy, which is taught by the, uh, League of California Cities.
And it's going before the Rec Commission tomorrow. So, Councilmember Hagan's going to the Rec Commission, uh, Recreation Commission tomorrow to discuss his ideas on recreation. Um, the Recreation Commission, per, per code, is supposed to be, like the Planning Commission, provide recommendations to council.
Independent.
Correct. However, in the past, they haven't really been utilized in that way, and so staff is, is trying to improve that process by having things go through them so that they are included, um, in the future on items.
'Cause the basic idea is the council appoints and removes planning commissioners and recreation commissioners. Sometimes you get a city council come in and says, this is what I want, and they go, like, that's what you're gonna get, 'cause they don't wanna get fired. That's the reasoning behind it. I'm not saying that's gonna happen. Uh, I'm, I'm not worried about your presentation or any, uh, heavy-handedness, but, uh, just, just out of sheer policy, um, like I said, it's, it's back to training.
Well, we did pass, several years ago, when we reformed the Recreation Commission, I remember, uh, there was a section in the code that was passed that went over a lot of rules, procedures, their duties, things like that. It may not be a bad idea to make sure that we're clear on that one so that we don't get Councilmember Hagan in trouble, or at commission anybody else in trouble. And that is a good point, and that is a traditional bugaboo point between, you know, council going down to another level, you know. And they're like, well, is it okay if he's a presenter? Or is it pref, preferable to maybe just have him contact one of the commissioners, or is it prefer, you know?
He had a, through that process, he reached out to the commission as a citizen and asked for his items to be, and asked if he could be agendized on the Recreation Commission to bring his items to their attention.
Uh, but that info.
And so he'll be going there tomorrow.
Okay, but does that, does that, uh, is that concurrent? Does that work within the section of the code that we have that defines the Rec Commission, their duties, procedures, that kind of stuff? I think that's what Mr. Haskin's pointing out as well, that we may wanna make sure that's been vetted, uh, before we go forth on this.
And that kind of puts you in an awkward position, too, because all of a sudden you become an advocate. And if you're an advocate, technically you're supposed to recuse yourself from any city council action, which takes you out. And if you're an advocate, technically you're supposed to recuse yourself from any city council action, which takes you out of the very plan that you wanted to get ahead, uh, get it, get before the city. So, and that's why I'm kinda bringing these things up, so there's no issues down the road. Like I said, I, I, no thought at all that you go in heavy-handed, cause I, I know you enough to know that, but just procedure.
Yeah, and my thoughts, I know this is on really short notice, but I think it would be a good idea, you know, to just dig up that section of code, whatever it is, dig up that section. Make sure that everybody's on the same page on it tomorrow, okay? And make sure that nobody is doing anything they're not supposed to do. And by the way, I think you will also find, I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Hagan, there are a lot of things that have not been put in front of the Rec Commission. That they've been put in front of us instead. And there's been several times where I thought, I'm pretty sure that we gave that responsibility to the Rec Commission. When we, you know, when we reformed them like eight, nine years ago. So, yeah, it might be a really good idea just to go over that code, like, in short, in the, tomorrow, you just make sure everybody's okay, you know?
So, the, the Rec Commission, a couple of months ago, um, got training on the code, and that code was passed out to them, so they each have a copy of it. Um, and, um, I think, just to be clear, um, Councilmember Hagan is coming to the Rec Commission as a community member tomorrow. Not in his council role. Um, and, um, just with ideas, like any, it's a public meeting, any member of the public can come before that commission.
And I'd have no issue with that whatsoever, as long as everybody knows who, which hat they're wearing at what time.
Yeah, yeah, and that's fine, yeah, as long, as long as that code's, you guys have done that up front and center.
Yeah, um, and, and a lot of those items that are gonna be going to them are, are considered operational in the aspect where we're presenting to them, and will be.
Yeah, I'm not telling them what to do, I'm just giving them some ideas.
Yeah, no, no, that's my, yeah.
Just, I could have my citizen's hat on now. Put my councilman hat off, but all my citizens hat.
Yeah, otherwise, if you have ideas, how do they know your ideas if you don't tell them your ideas?
Yeah, that's kinda a dilemma you run into.
You know, that just makes no sense.
Uh, unless you wanna go through, uh, staff, but then sometimes things get lost in translation too, so I understand how that works. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the audience?
Yeah, I agree with, uh, past Mayor Haskin, uh, that's how I always heard it. I've always heard when I was on the Planning Commission that I shouldn't even be here, because it's a conflict. But I never, ever brought up Planning Commission, uh, agenda item, ever to council. I ju, I was here as a citizen. As a citizen, I'm, I'm listening to discussion, I'm a visual person. I don't see anything here that delineates these parking lots and what lands you're talking about. I think in the future, if you're gonna have a discussion like this, let's, let's be able to see it, what you're actually talking about, because it's nebulous to me, right? I can't make heads or tails of it. Uh, it might be better to have that when you go to the Recreation Commission, so that they know exactly what we're talking about, how that, uh, reflects against the master plan. And to, to, uh, speak to the master plan, that, everybody knows that's probably not gonna happen, it's fourteen, fifteen million, uh, that it was to build that out. So, it's gonna go in bits and pieces, and I don't have a problem with that, and it's probably a more logical way to go. I like the separation. I think you got a good enough idea, you can, uh, explain it. I think staff oughta take that to Recreation and present it, saying this is what you've been asked to review, make your comments, do what have you, bring it back, discuss it again. If it wasn't, uh, presented properly, you can talk about it again.
Just to make it clear, um, what I'm presenting to them tomorrow has nothing to do with this. This particular stuff.
I'm just addressing that ethereal.
Yeah, I just want you to know, the public to know, uh, what I was presenting to them tomorrow was just basic ideas that had to do with, um, making the leagues more competitive. Operational stuff.
More competitive?
The, the leagues, the, 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 the skill sets, the children, that kinda stuff.
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought you were talking about the issue that was up here tonight.
No, this is like two separate things, but they're kinda synergistic in, in a weird way. Cause you have something that goes along with that, which is the upgrading of facilities. But what I'm talking about are things, what I was gonna talk to them about tomorrow are things that can be implemented now. That would really help our kids compete better, uh, and do better in general. And this is based on a lot of conversations I've had with citizens and, uh, minor league professional athletes, you know, it's not just my own thoughts.
Do you request any of these people that you're talking to show up at these commission meetings and?
I mean, I can, yeah, I, I was trying to lay out a basic discussion.
Hear that from the community.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, when people get up here and, and stuff, you, you appreciate that, that you're hearing from the community. And, uh, rather than just listening in a vacuum, so, and maybe you can get five or six of those individuals to show up and, and back it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience before I ask for anybody, any input from the phones?
I was just gonna advise that if you made any changes to what we have as the master plan, that's something that we would run before Rec Commission.
Right, okay.
And receive recommendation on and stuff, so depending on where council wants to go from here with that map. Uh, which, it's, it's my understanding you're kinda wanting, like, uh, Mr. Danzinger said in the audience. Um, visuals of the land and what's ten acres, three acres.
Yeah, that make, that makes sense, I, um, I'm looking at it more as a.
Bring up the map.
As a basic discussion right now, you know, if, if the senior stuff doesn't continue to play out like we'd want it to, cause so far, we've had, uh, the seniors asked to put brakes on it. And, and that they're wanting attainable, uh, housing and, and, um, fair market housing, which is different than what we were originally looking at, you know, you know, kinda thing. So, um, I'm looking at this other aspect of, well, how can we potentially use that land for the betterment of our community? And, uh, uh, working through these ideas for this, uh, the rec department stuff and wanting to present it to them, so they can digest it and come up with. Uh, do they think it's, um, you know, if these ideas are valid or not? You know, it's not my decision, it's their decision, but to put the ideas in front of them, so they can actually, you know, chew it over. Um, and then from there, kinda go from there and see where it goes. Um, and maybe it is a dead end, uh, maybe, you know, just because he wants nine point two doesn't mean that it would be nine point two. I'm looking at it like, is there a realistic line in the sand there that could, uh, be mutually beneficial? That's all I'm looking at. So like, if you go nine point two and you had two acres, it's really like seven point two, cause we're using two of those acres. You know what I'm saying, so it's just kinda one of those things.
Let's get Elsa's input.
Hello. Uh, I'll send it, I'll send it his way. Um, this kinda goes back to the land surplus and the parking lot. As you can imagine, after Erwin, I made a lot of phone calls to former colleagues in the state. It is not a secret, there is actually posted on the legislation, a list of communities they were coming after, and Escalon is on that list. Okay? We dodged the bullet, but after further phone calls, uh, they're watching. Uh, they are bound and determined to get in here. So, be real careful about opening that door, especially before we have a chance to maybe address it in a way that's more comfortable for our community.
It may not be a, a, a good idea overall, I just thought it would be, it was an interesting conversation.
It is, I mean, I, I understand the need for that, but you have to understand who's watching. Uh, and, and they are watching, let me tell you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody on the phones? All right, well, I think that at this time, we've had a great discussion about this, um. I'm gonna be leaning towards, you know, the Plan A is still doing something with senior housing. Um, maybe I'll stick with that plan at the moment, the triggering that surplus land act, even though I think it's a good idea. I think that's a sizable risk at this point in time, especially since we are probably still in a position where we can't control our own destiny. And you'd hate to give that up inadvertently. Um, so.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, so that's.
It's logical, yeah.
So, if nobody has any problem, I'd like to move on.
Hey, so, no direction to staff on this side at this point in time.
Right.
No direction.
It can always be brought up later on in the future as well.
Item number five, discussed agenda and requests submitted by Councilmember Hagan and Mayor Pro Tem Swift regarding discussion on the regulation of smoke shops. Dominic?
Sure, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, this item was brought before you, um, as indicated, um, to date, our municipal code does not have any regulations specific to smoke shops. Um, and so if this is an item that the public, or the council wishes to address. Um, now would be the time to provide some direction on what exactly we're looking for and how we would want to move forward. Um, we can implement an ordinance, um, we did include, um, City of Guadalupe, their comprehensive tobacco control policies. This was a document that Mark provided, um, they're a town similar in size, and they basically, um, have some, some ordinance requirements. Addressing tobacco, um, specific to kids and, and flavored tobaccos, those type of things. And so it really just depends on what the council's looking for, um, with direction, we can also reach out to other cities and, and find example ordinances. Um, I'm just gonna need an idea of whether this is something the council's interested in doing. Um, and I know Councilmember Hagan, as well as you, probably have some input that you'd want to discuss at this time as well. But we're basically asking for guidance, cause currently there is none. If a smoke shop comes into town, because there's no, nothing in the code that is specific to smoke shops, it's processed as commercial retail, C two. Um, and so they just go in, obviously we have separate municipal codes that address other things like signage and things. We also have a section of the code that deals with drug paraphernalia. We also have a ban in the city, uh, in regards to commercial, um, marijuana selling and stuff. And so those things would obviously be enforced, but nothing on smoke shops right now.
I was looking at, um, I believe it's Senate Bill seven nine three, that it was basically, uh, making it illegal for vapes, vape pens, uh, all the flavored tobacco stuff. That's there. Um, and I was looking at how Tracy addressed it. Um, and to me, uh, there needs to be a clear offer zone from anything that's youth-related. Because the information is pretty clear on that, as far as those, when you look at the statistics, uh, on smoking, um, you know, vaping. There's all kinds of different, uh, respiratory problems that are coming up, uh, you know, like lipoid pneumonias, for example. Uh, you know, kids that are three and a half times more likely to try it with, uh, these flavored tobaccos versus smoking. Um, and so you, you have to have, you know, obviously that balance between, um, you know, it's your right to do what you wanna do. And, um, respecting other people's children and sphere of influence. Uh, so, I look at it like it should be, uh, there should be a zoning, uh, there should be a zoning, um, application of this at least. Uh, where, you know, they can't be within so many feet of, you know, these youth. Um, uh, you know, where the youth congregate, so, you know, whether it's the school, uh, whether it's a daycare, that kinda stuff.
Yeah, and, you know, by the way, um, one thing we found out very quickly when that second smoke shop came into town, is that there's a lot of consternation within the community as to what's going on there. And what's, what are they doing, what do we know that they're doing, what does nobody know what they're doing, what does nobody know what they're selling? In fact, I think I've told several people personally, um, you know, a well-regulated marijuana shop. I've never seen a well-regulated marijuana shop that looks as sketchy as that, you know, as that, because it's a well-regulated marijuana shop. So, you know, and what's, why do we not have weed in town? Because weed's not federally recognized, tobacco therefore is federally recognized, so therefore that's probably why we have it under our code. You know, the zoning has what it is, what you had said that it is. I think that would go an awful long way if we did have some kind of an ordinance, and I wish the entire audience could have an opportunity to see what, uh, we were given. This is the City of Guadalupe's ordinance, there are several provisions on it that discuss everything from, uh, annual fees to a clear cut policy as to. Uh, compliance checks.
And Mayor, for the record, it is part of the agenda packet, it's on the screens right now.
Okay, well, can I see it, read fast, okay? Anyway, but what it does, i- it seems to be a comprehensive code of regulations that if we were to adopt something similar to that. Then Escalon would have, that I think would probably allay some of the fears, some of the concerns, which are very valid. I'm, I'm in the same boat, they're very valid fears and concerns, okay? I've been in both some shops. Do I know what I'm looking at with everything? No, I know what the cigars are, okay? But some of the others, I don't know, you know, and then you ask for certain products that I have heard of, and they say, no, we can't sell THC, okay? That's fine, but you know, a re, an actual enforcement mechanism, mine, I believe this one has, uh, law enforcement attending once a month, at least, at least monthly compliance checks. And I do like lines like this in the City of Guadalupe's code. Law enforcement's monthly visits to all eight retailers in the city have, has helped police establish a positive relationship with retailers. And also, it continues on, that you would have therefore, hopefully this would elate some of the community's concerns and fears. And the retailers are also gonna know, especially if they're gonna be unannounced visits, that yeah, they're being watched for compliance. For whatever compliance than any new state law, uh, requires, uh, any compliance that, you know, that makes sure that they're not running afoul of the marijuana laws in the state. And so I think that if we were to actually enact an ordinance like this, I think that would help go a long way, uh, towards, again, allaying a lot of those fears and concerns. So, I would like to see something like that happen as well. I'd like to get some more input though, if you have any.
Um, yeah, interestingly, we, we talk about, you know, trying to keep it away from activities with our youth, the problem is, is we do have a small town and. You can throw a rock and hit three from the high school parking lot right away, um, so that's a difficult thing. But I agree that, um, working towards getting rid of some of the flavored stuff is not necessarily a bad thing. Um, the vape pen type stuff, we can do without that, and Escalon, I don't have a problem with that, in my opinion, I, I have no problem with moving that and. In that direction, depending on how we word it and how we work with it.
Okay.
It'll be good, because some of those facilities sell alcohol as well, that could help our police force have better relationships with those businesses in that regard as well. Make sure we're looking out for our youth as well in that regard. So, I wouldn't necessarily have any idea of moving the needle on that, obviously we want the full council here to do something to that effect, but I, I'm moving the needle that direction, yeah.
Right. Uh, audience, thoughts on enacting a, on looking at enacting maybe some regulations on smoke shops in Escalon? I wish there are none now.
Uh, and Mayor, to be clear, basically, we would, we would be, um, asking the Planning Commission to come up with some. Um, you know, draft proposals, a, a draft ordinance or something to that effect.
And I would expect we would wanna do that as a consensus item versus a motion and a vote, an action item.
Well.
To have some consensus for us to move forward with that.
Okay.
Um, what we would do is, is take the items that you guys have discussed, um, buffer zones, um, for schools, daycares, et cetera. Monthly visits with law enforcement, things like this, um, as well as look at a few other cities that have, that have more recent, newer legislation or municipal code. Draft some, provide some type of draft to the Planning Commission for review, and then as their ideas come out and things will change, we make updates. And then once they're completed and have that recommendation, we bring it to council for review.
Uh, one quick question, just one second, Gary, one question, is there something that, I don't know if it's possible, can you limit the number of? Smoke shops, specific smoke shops, if it's not, I mean, you can't stop someone from selling tobacco probably, but you have to have a license for that. If it's in conjunction with, you know, an AMPM type situation, but just a specific smoke shop, exclusive smoke shop type thing. Is there a way to limit the number of those in our town?
I believe Tracy grandfathered, uh, they did some sort of a grandfathering, what they did. Um, that, um, allowed the current ones to be there, and then anything moving forward, um, was a no-go.
Yeah, I don't know, it's something that for the Planning Commission to, to think about, that's all I'm asking.
Sure.
Definitely look into that.
I don't know if that's where we wanna go or not, but another thought.
Mr. Haskin?
Yeah, you're asking, uh, there seems to be a, it's kind of a fuzzy area between smoke shops and marijuana dispensaries. Saying on one of our newest smoke shops, they advertised CBD, which is marijuana, which is specific. which is specifically forbidden in Escala. And there's a lot of sales of hookahs and they swear it's for smoking tobacco. I think everybody knows there's a difference and that it's not for tobacco. So I think it's gonna have to separate the two or make some distinctions because they're both interrelated. Whenever you have one, you'll have the other. That might be.
The state of California has put out that CBD is not marijuana and so it's allowed to be sold. However, anything that has THC in it is considered marijuana. And because we have that ban, they can't sell anything with THC. But CBD is allowed per state law.
Even, even though it is marijuana?
The state doesn't recognize.
It's more hemp, isn't it? Okay, well, now I know why they had the big sign, neon sign on there.
It's a component, but it's not considered marijuana. It's not, the CBD does not give you the
High THC.
The tripping and all that, no. That, but you can find CBD at writing, ointment, lotion, so.
Gummies, whatever. I just, I just saw that and it seemed to conflict with our ordinance, but now that the state has made that definition, my comments now avoid it.
Input, yes, Mr. Strowman.
I think the ordinance idea is a really great idea for a number of reasons. First of all, we want to protect our youth. Secondly, it actually gives Chief Flores and our police officers an avenue for enforcement. Chief, I don't know if you've been following some of the discussions that are going on on our various Facebook pages, but apparently our wonderful smoke shops that we have currently are selling some illegal stuff. I don't know, I mean, this kind of muddies the waters with ACLU and rights, et cetera, et cetera. But just something to consider is sending in a decoy into those places, unannounced, even if it's a youth, a youth decoy. Just, I mean, I know there are programs out there for alcohol. Just something to consider to see exactly what are they selling to their, our youth. I mean, you pull up in a cruiser, they're gonna be hiding that stuff right away. You're gonna ask them questions like Mr. Askin said, well, what are you doing with that bomb? Smoking tobacco. Yeah, right. But if you send a youth decoy in there, play dumb, now you're talking. And I think that's where Councilman Hagan, I mean, I can't speak for you, Councilman Hagan, but I think that's where you're going with this, is we want a level of accountability in our town. We recognize that if you want to smoke marijuana, that's your choice. But the whole premise is to protect our youth.
Yeah, I mean, this is a very, obviously a very family-oriented town, so, you know, what an adult does in their own house, whatever, hey, whatever. But when it's in a position where it's gonna directly affect other people's youth, that's where you have to look at it, go, okay, is this really okay?
Right, and, and one of them is in a really, really awkward spot because old Johnny and Suzie are going to get frozen yogurt at the sweet spot and mommy goes two doors next door and gets her flavored tobacco or her, or her pipe, if you will. And so I think it's important to, there needs to be some sort of regulation. And I'm speaking as a private citizen, not as a planning commissioner. Thanks.
Any further input?
I'd like to go back to the study. Those guys did a lot of homework. They had a problem, they said they had a, an F rating for whatever that was. And so they, they did a study and they went and looked at the problems and they were able to delineate it and put it down. Have we done that? I mean, we, we had a, we've got a shop out there that violated all of our sign ordinances and what have you and they needed to be knocked down for that. But what have we got to show that says we have a problem? I mean, we have X amount of liquor stores. Like you said, you can buy marijuana wherever you want, you can smoke it and walk down the street. Can you, Chief?
Not in public, you can't smoke it.
An adult?
Adults cannot smoke on public.
On public, okay, but in your backyard?
You can do it in the backyard.
Okay, so what I'm saying is if that was a problem with a lot of people doing that, we'd address it and we'd be documenting it along those lines. As Sean pointed out, you can run tests, decoys, that would help give you information as to what it is. But just to come out and throw an ordinance out there, you need to have some basis for it. Got to be, you know, what are your facts? This is a problem, it's affecting blah, blah, blah. And, and that would be my input there. As you said, I read that and I thought, those guys did a lot of work on that. They've got a pertinent money that gets these stores inspected. There's forms that are written up and they show up in agendas on police reports and things. You know, you need that kind of information really to make those kind of decisions, so. It can be used for other areas as well as this. So that's why I say, you know, do it pragmatically and show, show the basis for the need for the ordinance and what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other input from the audience before I ask for any input on the, input from the phones? Okay, anybody on the phone? Let me, at this point, let me go ahead and take it back. And I think all I'd like to do is ask for consensus to pursue this matter with staff and the, and the property commission.
Planning commission.
Thank you, I'm looking at these guys like, P commission, the planning commission, thank you. Is there such a consensus?
Yeah, yeah, my input, start looking into it.
Okay. Okay, okay, okay. Next item. And actually, on the next item, I have a bit of unusual request because I did mention this at the end of the last meeting. But I felt that, and I think we all felt that it was most appropriate to have a full council before we look at another mayor pro tem. So let me just hang on and twist in the wind a little longer, if that's okay with everybody else. And postpone this item till the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm good with that.
So that's a motion to continue.
Would you like to have action item on that one?
I'd like to make a motion to move agenda item number six to our next meeting on the nineteenth.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to move item number six to the next meeting. Is there any discussion of the motion on the table? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, say nay. Motion passes three to zero and we'll move on to council communications, Councilmember Hagan.
I appreciate the discussion on the recreation stuff. Like I said, I was looking for input from the council because you guys have obviously been here longer than I have and understand, you know, the ins and outs a little bit better. And so I appreciate that. I also look forward to presenting some ideas to the rec commission tomorrow and so that they can look at those and hopefully, you know, chew it over and see if they can, if they would or they wouldn't want to implement these kind of changes. And thank you, I think, believe it was James, right? Yeah, James Murray. Welcome to the team. And Nicholas Gek, really, really looking at what you've done as a pretty good achievement. I mean, eleven out of, you said with thirty-one?
Yes, correct.
Tells me he's doing his job pretty, pretty good. So, other than that, I think I'm good at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Hagan, Councilmember Bellinger.
Just to echo off of that, I wanted to welcome Officer Murray to the force. He's a great addition, I think he's gonna do great for us. To Officer Gek and also the rest of the force, we appreciate as a community your diligence in that DUI matter. Nothing ever good comes from those, so your diligence to making sure we keep our town safe is greatly appreciated. So pass it along to Officer Gek and the rest of the force as well. For Justin, just a quick question. We had brought this up, one of the community members did, I can't remember who it was, but the pedestrian crossing of McHenry at one twenty. When you're coming from Manteca coming this way and you hang that right and they make pretty good speed of it. I come that way, coming back from work each night, I've seen pedestrians there. I see the concern there. I was wondering, they've got some signage, riverbank, like by Oakdale there by the KFC where it's like the no right-hand turn signal, they have another one on McHenry out by like one of the car dealerships there. Is that something that we can look at doing something that actually flashes like that? Because that grabs your attention, that shows like, I don't know, the picture of a pedestrian or something like, there's someone actively in this crosswalk, hello. You know, that, just that one extra step, because the little guy, the little, you know, one foot by one foot little thing across the way. I don't think drivers are really seeing that and trying to make sure we don't have anybody getting smacked with someone making right. I don't know if that's possible, that's obviously a Caltrans thing, but just a thought I had had when I saw those no right-hand turns, they flash pretty hard and say hello and if there's any way that they've got some sort of pedestrian style of that light.
You know, Walt Merkin, I want to say, close to a year ago kind of brought that up and we brought this up to Caltrans in parts of our communication with them, relaying it. It was brought to them and they are supposed to be addressing that corner.
Okay.
I don't know exactly what, but I'll reach out to them, see how far along they are with that and see what ideas they have and at least share ours with, because people do change, so there may be something different there, but it definitely has.
Yeah, I don't think changing the timing of lights or anything, it's like something needs to kind of smack a driver in the face because they're looking to make that right-hand turn with the green and keep on flying and go pretty quick at that corner, so.
I would make sure to address with them.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up the fact, I know Mayor Alves is not here, but Saturday is the car show, everybody, downtown for the Lions Club. There's also a breakfast, I believe it starts at seven for the American Legion for that as well. Buy your tickets at the door, so please support that. I know it's gonna be a warm one out there, so I would recommend get early, grab your breakfast, go around, check out those cars and if you're there at two o'clock, bring the water and the hat, it's gonna be a hot one out there. So stay hydrated out there, but that's all I've got for tonight, folks. Yes.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Bellinger. And I'd also like to echo the sentiments, congratulations to Officer Murray and Officer Gek. Very well, well done and well reserved. Couple of quick things, to bounce off the speed bump, wasn't issue, wasn't there gonna, you were gonna compile a list of other streets with speed bumps on them? That, would you suggest that we put speed bumps on them?
Yeah, and kind of how the council came about is for the foreseeable future. When we're relaying or repaving a street, we'll dress that street at the time and decide if those need it. For instance, right now, we have David and Coley getting relined with the waterline of pavement and there will be speed bumps installed on both of those streets.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, I think that was a very fair and reasonable request that was made of the audience member tonight regarding the speed bumps, obviously, they, they work, people wouldn't be trying to avoid them. So, yeah, I think that's, that'd be fantastic. I, another question, is there, is there any overarching reason why the recreation survey hasn't been released to the public? I assumed it was.
Yeah, me too, assumed it was.
Council has not directed us to do so, but we are eager to do so if you'd like that done.
Can we give you consensus right now? Yeah?
I'd like to give consensus.
It's a survey that you guys have asked us to, so we'll go back to you.
Yeah, that's my input.
Please share the survey.
Yeah, I feel, feel like I'm not paying attention here. I didn't know there wasn't, I didn't know Councilmember Crumac left, so I mean, I'll try better to pay attention. I didn't know this wasn't released either, so yeah, that'd be great if it could be, if it could be. Hey, and, and finally, to bounce off the notion of education, I can't agree with that concept more that, that Mr. Askin brought up. You know, and there is a conference that the League of California Cities puts on every, I think, is it every year or is it every other year? It'll be every year.
They do one every year and they do a special one after the elections as well for all the new persons that are being elected.
Exactly, it's new mayors and new council members conference and it's usually held in January. And I cannot emphasize how important it is that it reminds or teaches a council member or a new mayor all the basics of, you know, how to, how to perform as a competent council member. There's an awful lot to it and people come into this thinking, well, of course I know how this stuff goes already because I watched it on TV or I don't even know how this goes, you know, I want to be fresh. Yeah, and that's how you end up doing things like violating the Brown Act or, you know, in a number of ways, Serial Brown Act, you know, violations. That's how you end up not being able to be a productive member at a council meeting, you know, doing things like talking out of turn, not having idea what this whole concept of Robert's Rules of Order are, not knowing what an enterprise fund is. There is a huge learning curve that I think that anybody who's ever been on any council or any governing body will tell you, there's a huge learning curve. And a jumpstart to it would be that education with the League of California Cities to start with. It's been optional for many years in Escala here. I think that we may not be a bad idea to make it mandatory. Now, if that means we need to cover financial costs as well, hey, it's gonna be worth it. It beats the heck out of a grand jury knocking on our door.
And it's always, it's always been covered by the city for council members to attend these, so it's not gonna add any additional costs per se, just. And the next, by the way, the next New Mayors and Council Members Academy through the league is on January eighteenth through the twentieth and February first through the third in Sacramento.
So personally, and this is what I'd like to ask the two of you, if you would like to see something along the lines of, you know, drafting verbiage that would make it mandatory for new council members in Escala. Trust me, everybody out there, it's going to help you. It is not going to hurt, it's going to help. And so as an additional safeguard to everybody here in the community, yeah, maybe we should ask for language to make it mandatory. What do you think?
Dates again, sorry, Mark?
January eighteenth through the twentieth.
Okay.
And February first to the third. The first to the third is in Universal City. The January eighth until the twentieth is in Sacramento.
And they would be anticipating that you're gonna be signing up after elections.
Sure.
And so that will definitely be advertised.
I would expect that we would need to have it put in language somewhere that is mandatory, correct?
Well, if the council would like by consensus to have staff draft proposed language, we can then put a, you know, come back, come back again with proposed language regarding adding something to the municipal code or something to our ethics code regarding trainings.
Right, well, then, yeah, okay, and that's what I'd like to do. And by the way, I'll go one step further regardless of, especially in this election, new or incumbent. It's, you know, there's nothing wrong with a refresher course. I went when I became mayor and, you know, sure, yeah, you've been doing this for eight years. You think you know everything, you don't know everything. And it's a valuable refresher course for incumbents as well. What do you think about asking staff to look into adding language?
I'm fine with that, I mean, any kind of education helps.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Consensus.
Consensus, then, okay.
Start looking at that, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Just so, just to make the council aware, staff has been working on getting trainings together and, and we will be working on that after election, once everybody is seated. Prioritizing training, workshops, educational pieces to provide. And so that's, that's gonna be something that we're looking to move into, into process after every election. That way we do catch newbies and refreshers.
Yeah, I, again, education, I have a certificate that requires me to get twenty hours of continuing at a year and believe me, every other year, it, it, it's just important. You know, education, refreshers, very important. It's not indoctrination, you can still hold all your political beliefs. This is just gonna keep you and the city you represent out of trouble. So, and be a much better, more effective council member. That's all I have. On that note, I'd like to close the public meeting and we'll be entering into closed session. Of course, you can always hang around, but if not, thank you very much for coming this evening, not only in the live audience, but also on the phones.